Good evening and Happy New Year. My name is Louis Imhoff and I am clerk to the board. I would like to welcome and thank you on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners for the County of Passaic for virtually attending this evening's 185th reorganization meeting being held today, January 6, 2022, at 5:30 PM. Ladies and gentlemen, the notice requirement of the Open Public Meetings Law has been satisfied with respect to this meeting, specifying the time, date, and location filed with the county clerk posted in the administration building and published in both the Herald News and the Bergen Record on January 3, 2022, in accordance with the provisions of the law. Now, I would like to call upon County Commissioner Terry Duffy to lead us in the flag salute. If everyone could stand.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Go ahead, County Commissioner.
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Can you hear me?
Actually, to make it legit, Mr. Duffy, could you redo that again? You are muted.
Do it again because nobody heard you.
I pledge allegiance
To the flag of the United States
To the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Before I ask for a moment of silence, I would like to introduce Reverend Andrew Smith, who will lead the invocation after the moment of silence. Reverend Smith is the pastor of Grace Presbyterian Church in Wayne, New Jersey. Now, on behalf of the board, I request a moment of silence and remember all the men and women who have died while serving in the United States Armed Forces and all who have died from COVID-19, especially over the 1,865 residents of the County of Passaic. And as we mark the first anniversary, the lives of the individuals that died in the insurrection at the United States Capitol last year on January 6, 2021.
Amen, and may peace be with us all. Let's join our hearts together, friends. Holy one of many names, Creator and Sustainer of all that is, we ask your blessing upon this assembly and upon all those gathered here from across the miles. And we thank you for the gifts of technology that enable us to gather safely and still honor the gifts and calling of community. As we remember and grieve the lives lost and communities devastated by the coronavirus pandemic and with the insurrection in our nation's capital ever present in our collective consciousness, we remember that in another time of unprecedented suffering, of collective anxiety and grief, you spoke through the prophets of old, calling your people to seek the shalom, the peace, prosperity, health, fullness, and well-being of the city where you had sent them. Such is our prayer for those who will be sworn in this evening and those who will continue their terms of service in the coming year, that they may put aside personal ambition and partisan divisiveness and together seek the shalom of this great county. We pray that as they lead, they may also be led with wisdom, compassion, humility, justice, and a desire to seek and serve the common good. O source and power of divine love, we know that you abhor wealth when your children live in poverty, that you hate privilege when your children are oppressed, that you despise solemn assemblies when your children struggle to breathe under the boot of injustice, that you reject lengthy prayers when lies are accepted as truth. So we simply and humbly pray that you would grant us all the imagination, the courage, and the will to love our neighbors as ourselves across Passaic County, throughout the state of New Jersey, from sea to shining sea in these United States and all around this world that you made and called good. We pray in the spirit that moves within, between, and around us all. Amen, amen, and amen.
Reverend Smith, thank you very, very much for that invocation. That was beautiful. Okay, now I am extremely honored. Let me put my video on. I am extremely honored to introduce this evening's master of ceremonies, Anthony J. De Nova, Administrator for the County of Passaic.
Some video difficulties, so can you hear me?
We can hear you and we can see you.
Okay, great. I can't see you, but if you could see me, I guess we're good. Well, good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. Congratulations to Commissioner Bartlet, Lazara, and Gallo on your elections to the board this year. At this time, as our custom always is to ask our assignment judge, Judge Ernie Capicella, to say a few words regarding the state of the courts. So Judge Capicella, Happy New Year to you and welcome. Always good to see you.
Good to everyone. First, just a few thank yous that I think are really necessary. I want to thank Chairman Curry, the commissioners, Mr. De Nova, Tony, we're good friends, go back a long time, Sheriff, Sheriff Birdnick, and Steve Worsini. That group of people have done more to improve this courthouse than any group since I've been assignment judge, which is coming up on nine years. So I want to thank you for the new elevators, for simple things like that, keeping this place. Steve Worsini and your crew, you know, under COVID, everything we touch within a few hours, it's wiped down by the maintenance folks. And so they've done a really great job in keeping us safe here in the courthouse. So thank you all. So just a little bit about where we stand here in the Passaic vicinity. So we still struggle with five judicial vacancies. Now, it's not just the number of vacancies that's relevant, it's the duration of the vacancy. And then that has to be translated into judicial work. And so if you take the five vacancies that we have for the time that we've had them, we've lost the productivity of one judge for eleven and a half years. Now, to put it in easier to understand terms, that's tens of thousands of cases that we haven't been able to process because we have five vacancies. So I'm hoping and praying that, you know, the governor and the legislature will see fit to help us do this. We've been working under COVID conditions virtually. So we've done 78,169 Superior Court virtual events since we started. We've done 59,986 municipal court events virtually. So we've been busy. We haven't been busy necessarily physically in a courthouse, but we've been busy virtually. Because we need to, we completed five in-person criminal jury trials and three in-person criminal jury trials that started and had to be postponed due to COVID. So that's been a big challenge for us. You know, we go through so much, they put a trial together and pick jurors, and then somebody gets COVID. It could be anybody. It could be the judge that was in the court. It could be the lawyers. It can be one of the jurors. And then we have to declare a mistrial and we lose all that valuable time that we expended to select a jury. Seventeen virtual civil jury trials have been completed. Now, those have been pretty simple jury trials. In other words, we're not trying virtually any medical malpractice cases or, you know, major commercial cases. A lot of those were very simple auto accidents or slip and falls that didn't require a lot of witnesses. And we have, because of that, we have five civil cases dismissed after the schedule for the trial, just as I said with the criminal trials because of COVID. The good part is, is that we have a saying in the judiciary, you know, trial pressure settles cases. Because we went back and even started to try these cases virtually, we had 361 civil cases settled pending while the, because of the trial pressure from those virtual trials. We've had very, one of the most important dockets in the courthouse. We had 1,694 family domestic violence TRO cases. Now, those we really don't do virtually. Those folks walk in, they come in, and we've set up technology safe rooms. So they come in and there's a couple on the third floor in 401. We have some here. And so they go there and we meet with them virtually while they're in that room. And there's a couple of reasons why we do that. One, to avoid the contact. And two, some of the litigants do not have the technological capability to appear from home. So when they come down here, we give that to them. Grand jury, we have four grand jury panels. And initially, we were virtual, but we're what's called hybrid now, meaning that the prosecutor and the prosecutor's witness and our clerk are in the room and the grand jurors are virtual. And we get a lot, I'll tell you, we get a lot of good participation virtually in that regard. You know, you can have up to 23 members of a grand jury. And when we meet in person, you know, we run like 15, maybe 16. But now virtually, you know, we're running up maybe between 19 and 21. So that's good, you know, more people are participating. So here's the real bad news, though. Here's the real bad news. We've got 764 criminal cases in backlog. That's a 67% increase, 67% increase since December of 2020. And a lot of these folks are sitting in jail waiting for trials. We have 39 general equity cases in backlog. That's a 32% increase. General equity, wells and estates, probate, commercial litigation. And so that backlog is up 32%. We've got our civil docket and we have 1,221 cases in backlog. That's a 34% increase from last December. So you can see these numbers are staggering. Now, I don't want to say it's just us. There are a lot of vicinages that are experiencing the same thing. Here is something I know that you're all interested in. So we have 5,718 special civil part cases. These are cases where, you know, the parties are suing for an amount that's lower than the threshold that we use in the regular part. And so that's been a 43% increase from December 2020. Now, of that, and this is where we get concerned, 5,164 cases are backlog in landlord tenant. And it's increasing, 42% since December of 2020. Family cases, we've got about 1,099 cases in backlog. Some of that's divorces, juvenile delinquency. So you can see we're really very anxious to try to get back to what we call normal and what the new normal is going to be because we have our work really cut out for us when you look at these backlog numbers and trying to decrease them. And these are folks who really deserve their day in court and have been waiting for so long and they're so frustrated. So hopefully, we'll get there and we'll be able to start to move these. That's the state of the courts right now. We're doing well, though. I mean, these things are here, but for the environment that we're working in, we're doing well. We're doing the best we can. Our judges are doing the best they can. And some of the virtual things that we do are going to continue even when things get back to quote-unquote "normal" because the lawyers like it and the litigants like it. So that's it, Anthony. Thank you. And commissioners and Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Judge Capicella, as always, thank you so much. And I have to say, you know, you're a great partner in governing. We have great communication, talk to each other frequently to make sure we're on the same page. Hasn't always been that way, but I am certainly appreciative of all the cooperation that you give me and the county commissioners and the county as a whole. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'm going to call upon our county clerk, the Honorable Danielle Imhoff, Ireland Imhoff, to certify the election results. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. De Nova. Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. The Board of Canvassers of Passaic County has determined the following individuals as being elected as county commissioners on the election held on November 2, 2021 in the County of Passaic. Cassandra Sandy Lazara, who received 52,552 votes, John Bartlett, who received 51,515 votes, and Nicolino Gallo, who received 51,155 votes. In carrying out my statutory duty, I have certified and transmitted the election results memorializing Cassandra Lazara, John Bartlett, and Nicolino Gallo as being duly elected to their respective seats on the Passaic County Board of County Commissioners to the New Jersey Secretary of State and Passaic County's own, the Honorable Tahisha Way. Thank you to the voters of Passaic County for exercising your duty and voting in the November 2, 2021 elections.
Thank you, Danielle. I'm sorry, can you still hear me? I hate keep asking this, but.
Yes, we can.
All right, because IT is trying to fix the problem as we're speaking. I apologize. So at this time, I'm going to ask our newly elected surrogate. Congratulations to Zoila Casanova, who was sworn in on Tuesday as our surrogate court judge. We're very excited to have you here to administer the oath of office to our newly reelected Commissioner Cassandra Lazara.
Now, raise your hand. I, I, Cassandra Lazara, do solemnly swear, do solemnly swear that I will affirm that I will support, that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the United States, and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and the Constitution of the State of New Jersey, and that I will bear true, and that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same and to the government established in the United States and to the government established in the United States and to the state and to this state under the authority of the people and that I will faithfully justly perform all the duties of county commissioner to the best of my ability and understanding so help me God.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks for being here today. You know, being sworn into my third term as a county commissioner means really so much to me. I think that I had a tough time today, being the one-year anniversary. That's been all over the news of the insurrection and being so overjoyed to be able to sit again on this Board of Commissioners with my colleagues. I want to thank our chairman, John Curry, our vice chairwoman, Barbara Tanis, the entire team that worked with me and our entire team during this year. That was so unpredictable due to the pandemic. And a lot of things, although they stayed the same, they changed. But what didn't change is that the four of us, Assad After, John Bartlett, Zoila Casanova, and I ran as a team and we supported each other. And it was just so important to all of us to make sure that we held on to one another and helped each other through this. To my colleagues on the Commissioner Board, I look forward to the next three years with you. You know, I call you my band of brothers, and you certainly are. Anthony De Nova, Lou Imhoff, our staff here in our office has made this job so enjoyable. And I'm really able to do what I was, I feel like I was almost born to do because I come from a long line of people who have served their constituents, beginning with my grandfather back in 1920s when he was an alderman in the 7th Ward here in Patterson, and my dad, who was a state senator and a freeholder. And I had just such great examples growing up. We've accomplished a lot also this year in the county, although we were hindered a little bit again by the pandemic. And, you know, I walk through this county and no matter where I go, there's no place else I'd rather be. Passaic County, as Anthony you put in your letter, has grit. And it's that grit that keeps us going. So I look forward to the next three years with everyone. And again, I thank you all for everything. My family has been here to support me and it's just been a great, a great time. And Hector Laura, thank you for being here for the benediction today. I so appreciate that. Congresswoman Cheryl, you know. Everybody, thank you so much for everything.
At this time, I have the honor of introducing the Honorable Thomas Giblin, Assemblyman in the 34th District and a good friend of Passaic County. We claim him as one of our own. Assemblyman, good to see you. Happy New Year. He is going to administer the oath to newly reelected Commissioner John Bartlett.
Just a couple of remarks, Administrator De Nova. Just want to acknowledge my dear friend, Chairman John Curry, to Judge Capicella for his continuing leadership and all the other distinguished guests who are on today's call. It's an honor to represent Passaic County, in particular, the residents of the 34th Legislative District. I pledged during my tenure in the Legislature to work closely, not only with elected officials in the 34th District, but also Passaic County officials together. It's all about working together as a team to produce results that are beneficial to our communities. It's my honor at this time to ask Commissioner Bartlett to take the oath of office. John represents the definition of what's good about a public servant. And I'll ask him to take this oath. Mr. Bartlett, if you can repeat after me. I, John W. Bartlett,
I, John W. Bartlett,
do solemnly swear
do solemnly swear
and I will support the Constitution
and I will support the Constitution
of the United States
of the United States
and the Constitution
and the Constitution
of the State of New Jersey
of the State of New Jersey
and I will bear true faith and allegiance
and that I will bear true faith and allegiance
to the same
to the same
and to the governments established
and to the governments established
in the United States
in the United States
and in this state
and in this state
under the authority of the people
under the authority of the people
I will faithfully
and I will faithfully impartially
and justly perform
and justly perform
all the duties
all the duties
of county commissioner
of county commissioner
to the best of my abilities
to the best of my abilities
and understanding
and understanding
so help me God
so help me God
congratulations and good health and keep doing a great job. Thank you.
Thank you, Assemblyman. Your floor, Commissioner.
All right. Thank you very much, Anthony. Thank you very much, Assemblyman. And thank you and good evening to everyone who's watching. Thank you for joining us. I wish we could be together, but we will have to settle for the next best thing. And we've all done a lot of settling for the next best thing over these past two years. But that's how we've managed to keep each other safe, especially those loved ones who are most vulnerable. So did my dad in Hershey, Pennsylvania, my father and mother-in-law in Atlanta, and everyone else who's watching around the world. I'll see you soon. Happily, I had Kyati and Kedar by my side. Through thick and thin, Kyati is my most valuable sounding board and the true north of my moral compass. Today is the fourth time Kedar has held the Bible for me. But as some of you probably noticed, this is the first time he's done it, standing taller than me. I'm so proud of the young man he's become. Thank you, Assemblyman Giblin, for being here tonight and for the honor of swearing me in. The lessons you've taught me about consistency and tenacity of staying in the fight and sticking with the work even when it's hard and unglamorous are an example for all of us. Thank you as well to all the other dignitaries in the virtual room with us tonight. Passaic County Democratic Chairman and State Chairman Emeritus John Curry, Vice Chairwoman Barbara Tanis, Congresswoman Mikey Sherrill, Judge Capicella, Passaic County Clerk Danielle Ireland Imhoff, Passaic County Surrogate Zoila Casanova, and any others that I missed because they're not on my screen. Today's the Feast of the Epiphany, also known as Three Kings Day. So to everyone celebrating and especially to the Latino communities that make Passaic County such a wonderful place to live and to eat. Feliz Dia de las tres Reyes. Thank you to my friends Reverend Andy Smith and Mayor Hector Laura for beginning and ending this ceremony with words of faith. I took my oath this year, as I always do, on an open Bible. Closed Bibles are fine for waving around or holding up in the air at a rally. But a book's lessons are only found once you open it. This year, I chose the 24th chapter of the Gospel According to Matthew. That's a darker choice than I've made in the past. In those passages, Jesus speaks to his disciples about wars and rumors of wars, of great tribulations and false prophets. But he also comforts us. All these things must come to pass, but the end is not yet. Those that endure unto the end, they shall be saved. The past few years have offered more than their share of tribulations. From the murder of George Floyd, the racial and economic disparities, and how the COVID-19 pandemic is impacting American communities, to a bitterly fought presidential campaign and its aftermath, to the ease with which some now threaten violence against doctors, against school boards, against anyone with whom they disagree. The past two years have offered painful examples of the imperfections of our union. Today is not just the anniversary of the long ago arrival of the Magi in Bethlehem. As others have referenced, it is also the far worse and more worrisome anniversary of the violent and deadly attack on the United States Capitol by supporters of the former president, intending to prevent Congress's certification of the free, fair, and democratic election of President Joe Biden and Vice President Kamala Harris. Historians are fond of pointing out that this was the first incursion into the US Capitol since the British during the War of 1812. Far more troubling to me is that it was the first time ever that a mass of Americans invaded that building, having chosen to take up arms against our nation and against democracy itself. We had had up until that point 54 consecutive peaceful transitions of presidential power. That vital legacy on which our national well-being and prosperity rests as much as on anything else is now reset to zero. We are in nearly unprecedented times of American political polarization. We need to seize any opportunity we have to bridge our political divides, at least those divides that are legitimate, fact-based disputes over policy. Where our differences derive from the gap between truth and lies or from the idea that some of us more than others are fully entitled to the fundamental rights Americans are supposed to enjoy, common ground must be found not on the bridge, but on the terra firma of fact, science, and equality under law. At the local level and in spaces like this, building bridges and rediscovering truth can start with a personal, human connection. At the national level, it must begin with an agreement to principles that do not give way to politics. The first of these must be free and fair elections where the right of every American to cast a ballot and have it counted, regardless of their race, age, disability, native language. regardless of their race, age, disability, native language, or the state that they live in. As Joe Biden said this morning, you can't love your country only when you win. I did not particularly enjoy the first two weeks of November twenty twenty-one. I would have liked to have learned on my victory on election night surrounded by my friends, family, and supporters, not two weeks later surrounded by my lawyers. But in fact, I think this election coming at this time with all that our country, uh, all that our county and our nation have been going through was an important reminder of how much is at stake. And that in the worlds of, in the words of abolitionist lawyer Wendell Phillips, eternal vigilance is the price of liberty. And if you thought that was Thomas Jefferson, so did I until I looked it up this afternoon. So let that be the star guiding us through this long night. And despite wars and rumors of wars, we as an American democracy will yet prevail. In closing, I want to thank my running mates, including Passaic County Surrogate Judge Zoila Casanova and former County Commissioner Assad Achter for a great year together on the campaign trail. Thank you to everyone, including Governor Phil Murphy, our Senate Assembly and local running mate, and everyone who supported us with your time, your talent, and your treasure. I'm glad to be back with Sandy Lizarra for three more years of service on this remarkable board, along with Bruce James, T.J. Best, Terry Duffy, and Pat Lepore. And I'm pleased to welcome Nicolino Gallo. Nick, I hope we can work together for the betterment of all of Passaic County. Thank you all very much and good evening.
Thank you, Commissioner. Uh, at this time, I have the honor of introducing, uh, Senator Kristen Carrato to administer the oath of office to our newly elected Commissioner Nicolino Gallo. Senator, welcome back.
Happy New Year to everyone and a very healthy new year as well. I, Nicolino Gallo.
I, Nicolino Gallo.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
The United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of New Jersey.
Of the state of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Established.
Established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority.
Under the authority.
Of the people.
Of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties.
All of the duties.
As county commissioner.
As county commissioner.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you again. All right, did everyone hear me?
Sure.
I don't know if, is it good?
Let's say I just got bumped off.
Uh, anyone, anyone here?
They were back.
We're, we're all back. I don't know.
Okay, we're back there.
Flip on the internet, we're back.
Didn't know whether it was just me or it was everybody.
Uh, but, uh, Commissioner Gallo, if you could, um, I, I would suggest, I think half of your, half of your, um, uh, oath was, was cut off. We had a low bandwidth. So I would suggest that you, uh, do it over again. Is that correct?
Okay.
Sorry, but we, we went to a low bandwidth.
He's got it memorized now. I, Nicolino Gallo.
I, Nicolino Gallo.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of New Jersey.
Of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority.
Under the authority.
Of the people.
Of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
As county commissioner.
As county commissioner.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Everyone get them this time.
You, we're, we're good now, Commissioner Gallo. Thank you so much, sir. Congratulations.
Thank you. All right. I just want to wish everybody a happy new year. And I'm making sure it's sweet, so I'm very looking forward to working with everyone, um, to help and, um, assist anyone in the residence of Passaic County. And I just want to thank everyone and I'm looking forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gallo, and welcome to our Passaic County family.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to turn it over back to the clerk to the board for nominations of director for twenty twenty-two.
Thank, thank you very much, Administrator De Nova. Okay. Uh, all right, we're Jay on the, uh, on the agenda. May I have the nominations for director for the year twenty twenty-two?
Mr. Imhoff, it's my privilege to nominate our long-serving colleague Bruce James to be director of the board for twenty twenty-two.
Do we have a second?
Uh, it's my privilege to, uh, second that nomination for my running mate Bruce James.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? May I have a motion to close the nominations? Uh, seconded by Best, uh, uh, for, um, motion was made by, uh, Commissioner Duffy. Roll call, uh, County Commissioner is Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Lizarra.
Yes.
Lepore.
Yes.
May I have a motion to vote upon the nomination for County Commissioner Director?
I move it.
It's my pleasure to nominate Sandy Lizarra as Deputy, Deputy Director.
Um, uh, hold, hold off, uh, Commissioner Duffy. We're just still doing, uh, M right now. Uh, I, can I have a second for, uh, for County Commissioner for Director?
Second.
Bartlett. That motion was made by Lizarra and seconded by Bartlett. Uh, roll call, County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
James.
Best.
Lizarra.
Yes.
Lepore.
Yes.
Congratulations, uh, County Commissioner, uh, Director James as, uh, Director for the year two thousand twenty-two for the board. May I have a nomination for Deputy Director for the year twenty twenty-two?
It'd be my pleasure to nominate Sandy Lizarra for Deputy Director.
Thank you, Commissioner Duffy. Uh, may I have a second for that nomination?
It's my honor to second the nomination of my colleague and friend Sandy Lizarra for Deputy Director.
Thank you, Commissioner Lepore. Are there any other nominations? May I have a motion to close those nominations? That, that was moved by James? And, uh, second?
For four seconds.
Uh, roll call, County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy. Gallo.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Lizarra.
Yes.
Uh, uh, Lepore.
Yes.
May I have a motion to vote upon the nomination for County Commissioner, uh, County Commissioner Deputy Director?
So moved.
Second.
Four seconds.
And then seconded by Lepore. Motion made, uh, by Best and seconded by Lepore. Roll call, County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
James.
Yes.
Lizarra.
Yes.
Lepore. Uh, congratulations, uh, County Commissioner Deputy Director Lizarra for year, uh, twenty twenty-two.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, I'll, I'll ask, uh, the Deputy Director's son, Joe Capo, to administer the oath of office to his mommy. Never too old to call a mommy.
I, Cassandra Lizarra.
I, Cassandra Lizarra.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
As County Commissioner Deputy Director.
As County Commissioner Deputy Director.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you, thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
At this time, I'm going to ask, uh, our County Clerk, the Honorable Danielle Ireland Imhoff, to administer the oath of office to our Director, Commissioner Bruce James.
Well, it's my honor to administer the oath of office to, uh, the Director for twenty twenty-two, Commissioner James. Knowing Reverend Smith was leading us in the invocation, all of the great qualities he mentioned we should have as residents and as neighbors. Commissioner James, you have those qualities and then some, so I'm looking forward to your leadership this year.
Thank you.
Would you raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me? I state your name.
I, Ms. James.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution.
The Constitution.
Of the United States.
The United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of New Jersey.
Of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
True faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States. And in this state.
This state.
Under the authority of the people.
Authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully, impartially, and justly perform
Justly perform.
All of the duties as County Commissioner Director.
County Commissioner Director.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
And understanding.
And understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, Director James.
Thank you, Anthony, very much.
Congratulations, Bruce.
Thank you, all of you.
There's an opportunity for some remarks, if you have any.
Actually, the gavel is next and then remarks.
Oh. All right, well, before I before I call upon, uh, uh, our Chairman Curry to, uh, present the gavel to the new director, uh, there, I, I did notice a few dignitaries who are, uh, on the line. Of course, we, I don't know if she's still there. I know we had Congresswoman Mikey Sherrill, uh, but we have Mayor Kazmark from Wimbledon Park, uh, Mayor Mohamed Karula from Prospect Park. Uh, I saw Carol Codrato, who is Chief of Staff to Senator Nellie Poe, was with us. Uh, and I, uh, also saw a young lady we're hearing great things about. He was just recently elected President of the North Haven School Board. Lucy De Nova was, was on the line as well, so. But at this time, it is always a great honor to introduce, uh, a true gentleman and a true friend, uh, to, to not only myself and everyone on this call, but to the people of Passaic County. Um, so it is my honor to introduce to you, uh, Democratic State, uh, well, former Democratic State Chairman, but always Passaic County, uh, Democratic Chairman John Curry. Chairman?
Uh, thank you, uh, Mr. De Nova, and thank you for your work over the years and what you've done to, uh, start with the commissioners to put this county on the right track for so many years. Uh, folks, if I may start a little different, uh, I have to start by thanking and commending our assignment judge, uh, Judge Capicello. Uh, for the amazing job that he's done, uh, as a assignment judge. And, uh, he has one of the, the best bench of judges that we have in the state of New Jersey. And I think his, his message was so informative and, and if I may suggest to you, Mr. Administrator and the board, I, I would, with his permission, I would love for you to have him back in about the next six months that he can give you and hopefully an update of, of where he stands and how he's progressed, um, with his calendar. Uh, I just think that's important to our citizen of Passaic County who do not understand the different situations, particularly with COVID, that, uh, the assignment judge and his team have to endure. And I will commit it to, uh, uh, the honor of Judge Capicello that I would do anything, uh, I can over the next six months a year to, uh, hopefully, uh, increase his vacancies, uh, to make his workload a little less. So, uh, I, I had to start by saying that. But, uh, if I could go into why we're here, I want to congratulate, um, uh, the three commissioners that well-liked it, um, and of course, our surrogate, uh, Zola Casanova. And I have to start by where it all starts. I have to start with our municipal leaders who, first of all, uh, back me and worked with me to decide who is going to run on our ticket. Uh, that's number one. And if we go forward with our Democratic clubs, uh, my professional teams that helped put this campaign together, the, Ryan Yakko and his team that runs the day-to-day operation and put these teams together. And I have to mention, and, uh, uh, Administrator De Nova, the sheriff is on this call. Uh, just so you, you, you know, uh, the sheriff is on the call there and I have to thank him for the work that he and his team have done in this, uh, this previous year and what he does every year, not only keeping this county safe and working with you to keep your budget under control. You know, and I can tell you, as a Democratic Party, I couldn't be, couldn't not be proud of of the work that we have done over the years and where, when we took control of this county, I believe it was in nineteen ninety-seven and where it is today. And that, uh, that, the hat's off to all of you with the work you've done. You've done right by the citizens here in Passaic County, which makes me extremely proud because you know my model. When you give good government, it creates good politics. And I think we show that each and every day. So, uh, Commissioner Gallo, welcome aboard. You'll find out you have a fair team, that they all have uh, opinions, but we come together to do what's best for the citizens of Passaic County, and that's what's important. And if we get back from Judge Capicello, as he raises his gavel, that sign of authority that I am now going to hand over to our new Director for this twenty twenty-two year. Uh, Director James, use this in good hands. Use it to make sure that we're doing the right things for the citizens of Passaic County. My best to you. Here is your gavel. Good luck in twenty twenty-two.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you very much. Now I'll say a few words, and very few. First of all, I, I want to thank you, Chairman. Uh, you know, uh, seventeen years ago, you gave me an opportunity to run for, uh, what was then called preholders for this board. And I am now in my seventeenth year and sixth term, uh, and I owe that to you and I will always be indebted. Now, we've been friends a long time. You are a remarkable person, a remarkable chairman. And, uh, I can't think of a better person to be beholden to than you. Uh, you're honest, you're hardworking, and you care. And that's what matters in, in, in life and in politics. So I really appreciate the So I really appreciate the fact that you're the chairman. I want to make this rather short. We have a very good team. You know, we haven't raised taxes in three of the last four years. You know, we put the county on the right path economically and without gimmicks. You know, these aren't gimmicks when we don't raise taxes. We don't create a sewer fee or some other kind of fee. They're just straight-out good county government and good fiscal responsible leadership allows us to do what we do, and I thank our Administrator Anthony De Nova for heading up the team that allows us to do just that. I'm proud of this county's response. We're in the third year of a pandemic, and I don't think anybody exactly knows where things are going, but I will say that Passaic County's response to the COVID pandemic from year one of the pandemic has been the best in the state and in some instances, best in the country. You know, people called from Texas and from Hawaii to find out how you're doing our testing programs, because that's how good they were. So I want to thank our county administrator. I want to thank our Health Department with Charlene Gungle, who is our epidemiologist. I want to thank all our department heads that helped in this regard, and I want to thank the sheriff particularly, because without your staff running, helping to run the sites where we did the testing and the vaccines, it would have been chaos, and it wasn't. It was well done, so. And many volunteers that helped to distribute food. We made sure people had food. We made sure people could have medicine. Where people couldn't come out of the house, we delivered it to their house. We expanded Meals on Wheels. We took care of people during the worst of the pandemic, and now we pray that everybody who can get vaccinated gets vaccinated. It's the only way out of this. But the response from this county was second to none, and Anthony, as I said to you and Charlene many times, you all saved lives. You all saved lives, and there's no, there's no thanks that is appropriate when that's the history that you've had, is making sure that people lived through this pandemic, so I'm very happy. We actually have an increase in county residents, so this county actually grew during the pandemic, and that's because we have a policy of being very friendly to jobs and new businesses, more new businesses have opened up in Passaic County than in the past few years during a pandemic. So we have been extremely, extremely active in making sure that the economy of Passaic County was on track, and we beat most other counties in terms of how we handle our economy, and it shows. So people are moving into Passaic County for a reason, and I'm proud of that record that we all have. We are going to expand some things with our county college. We're increasing union programs that provide real training for people to get into trades. They're interested, we are interested, and we're going to make sure that everybody who wants a job in Passaic County is properly trained for that job. So that's where we plan on going this year. We've been meeting a thing called Impact Passaic. We're going to continue to do things that are in the right, you know, the right interest for the citizens of this county, and we hope for another good year like we've had in the last few years. So thank you all for your support, and let's get back to work. I think it's time to get to work, and Chairman, again, thank you. You put together a great team, and it's paid off, and I thank you so much for what you've done. Anyway, guys, let's get back to work, and what we got to do for the citizens of this county.
And Director, far be it from me to correct you on your first day as Director, but the county of Passaic has not raised taxes for three years in a row and four out of the last five years.
All right, I just went by.
I know that's exactly what you meant to say, but it's not exactly what you said. So for the record, four out of the last
For the record, I got it from a tweet that was made the other night, so that's where I got the information, so.
I'm just glad I'm not sitting close enough to be hit with that gavel. Okay, Director, so at this time, I think it would be up to you to open the floor to the public.
Yeah, all right, so I'll take a motion to open the public portion of the meeting.
Make that motion.
I'll second.
Motion made by Commissioner Duffy and seconded by Commissioner Lepore. Roll. County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Best. Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Lepore.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazar.
Yes.
Director James. Yes. Anybody present wish to be heard? Do we have anything mailed in, emailed in, Louis? Yes, just a very short one email that came to public@passaiccountyandjay.org, and it's from Laura Fram. Want to thank the County Commissioner, Laura Fram from Pompton Lakes. I want to thank all the county commissioners and support staff for all your hard work and dedication to the county. The last 22 months have not been easy. And then I'm going to ask Micah if we have anyone sitting in the chat room that wants to speak.
We have no hands up in the attendee list. We have no questions in the Q and A, and there are no comments in chat at this time.
Can we just give that, can we just give that 20 seconds, just in case somebody does raise their hand? Okay, still nothing, Micah?
That is correct, sir.
I'll take a motion to close the public portion.
Second.
Well, who moved it? Thank you. And who seconded it?
I'll second.
Both, Pat. I believe it was Commissioner Duffy made the motion, and Lepore seconded it. All right, roll call. County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Lepore.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazar.
Yes.
Director James. Yes. We're going to move on to the consent agenda. These are the appointments to all the boards and commissions. Louis. Correct, plus the temporary budget to get the county up and running fiscally. All right. All right, so can I have a motion on the consent agenda?
I'm moving.
Move by Commissioner Lazar.
Second.
Seconded by John Bartlett, Commissioner Bartlett. Roll call. County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Lepore.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazar.
Yes.
Director James. Yes. All right, so we have a number of presentations. Lou, do you want to introduce the first presentation? Yes, we have a video presentation from United States Senator Cory Booker. If Micah could present that, please note that we might have some diff, go ahead.
It's not going to appear on Facebook Live. It will be posted later, so for those who are on the WebEx call, they'll be able to see it. Facebook will not be able to see it.
Hi, this is United States Senator Cory Booker, and I will thank you for giving me the call. I, warmest
Okay, Louis, we were going to have, well, we were going to have statements from Congressman Pasrell. I don't know if Mikey Sherrill is still able to be on. They're on their way back from DC. This was an important day to be in DC, so I don't know that they're going to be able to speak, but they both sent their, you know, congratulations to the people who were sworn in tonight and their support. Yes, we did lose Congresswoman Sherrill on the train. She was with us for a little bit, so thank you. Director. I appreciate both of them, you know, speaking up and wanting to send their, you know, congratulations. That concludes our program. No, the Administrator De Nova is going to do Agenda Item Y now.
Yep, so anyone who on the consent agenda was appointed to one of the following boards or commissions, we would ask that they would stand up, raise your right hand, and Judge Capicello is going to administer the oath of office. Your Honor.
But, okay, please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
Of New Jersey.
That I will bear.
And that I will bear.
Bear.
Will bear.
True faith and allegiance.
True faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established.
And to the governments.
Established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully
That I will faithfully
impartially
Impartially.
And justly perform
And justly perform.
All of the duties
All of the duties.
Of the committee that I've been assigned for the county.
I've been assigned.
I've been assigned.
Committee I've been assigned for the county of Passaic.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Understanding.
And understanding.
Understanding.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. I think Mr. Imhoff has distributed the oath of offices that we have assigned, and we'll get back to Judge Capicello.
Yes, that is correct, Administrator. I will collect them, and then tomorrow, I will deliver them to the assignment judge for his signature.
Yeah, Louis, so you know, we have a delayed opening tomorrow in the judicial. So 11 o'clock is
Only state employees, for those county employees who may be watching.
There's only going to be
I repeat, that is only state employees, not county of Passaic.
I'm going to go now to remarks from our county commissioners. Sandy, we'll start with you.
I'm sorry. My comments?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, you know, this has been quite a ride these last few years, and I, again, and I said it before my last time I spoke, I couldn't be more proud to be representing Passaic County and to be a resident of Passaic County and work with everyone here. I think our record speaks for itself, and I know when the chairman says, and he speaks about good government, that's what we have here. We have good government, and I think part of that is because of our open dialogue and our genuine respect that we have for each other. And the respect we have for the residents of Passaic County, because, you know what? We may have over 500,000 residents in this county, but each one of them count. And we do, and I know, and I speak for everyone, especially everyone I'm looking at here, that we do what comes from our heart. And, you know, Anthony, I always say this to you, that, and I said it the other night at our meeting, Anthony, you know everything about county government, and you are a go-to person for us, but I respect you so much, what you do from your heart, and I couldn't be more proud to be part of this board, part of this county, and to work with each and every one of you. So I thank you all.
Thank you, Commissioner Lazar.
I think that's her polite way of calling me old. I'm not sure.
I'm older than you.
No, you're not. You're not older than anybody. Commissioner Bartlett, you're next.
I pretty much said what I said already, but it's a privilege to serve with all of you, and I look forward to the year ahead, and let's get to work.
Thank you. Commissioner Best.
Everyone, Happy New Year to all, and Mr. De Nova, very thankful of the memo that you put out again, our year-end review. You know, these last couple of years in the pandemic have been very hard on everyone, but this is where government and public servants matter the most. You know, it's easy to lead in the time of prosperity, but when times are tough, you know, real leadership matters, and you and your team and everyone who works in the county make us look good as county commissioners. Nick, you're joining a really good team of county commissioners, but you're joining the even better team of public servants and public employees that we have working with us here in the county of Passaic. I ask that everyone, you know, in the public, have a chance to review some of our accomplishments over this year. Even though it was bad in many respects, and we lost a lot of really good people, government was there to do what government does, and we did it well. And that is kudos to all the hard work of the men and women that we have working for the county of Passaic. So thank you all, and we're hoping that this year is going to be much better than the last two, God willing. It's good to see you as well, Mayor, Mayor Laura. Love you, man.
Thank you, TJ. Terry Duffy. Commissioner, you're up.
Sandy and Commissioner Bartlett, welcome. Commissioner Gal, it's been a tough year for everyone. I wanted some regards to the chairman, and also Tony De Nova. I won't blow his head up too big, but he leads the pack here. He's done a great job. I've been fortunate enough to be around with some of these older guys, and I look forward to a better year than the last two years. It's been tough for everyone. The employees make us look good, and Tony, you make us look good. And Chairman, you are the chairman, and Happy New Year to everyone. Be safe. Thank you. And chairman, you're, you are the chairman and happy new year to everyone. Be safe. Thank you.
And Commissioner Gal.
I just want to thank everyone again and I'm looking forward to working with everyone and welcome me in. I greatly appreciate that. I'm also looking forward to serving the residents of Passaic County that got me this position. Thank you very much.
And Pat Lapore.
Oh, thank you, director. First of all, I wish everyone a happy and healthy new year with the emphasis on healthy. Lord knows it's a most important thing in our lives today. I want to welcome our new surrogate and our new commissioner to the board and welcome back to our two commissioners. Commissioner Gal, you're going to see that this is a very good team. We get a lot of things done. We have the welfare and of our constituency. And you'll see, we have a great team of department heads, great employees here and looking forward to working with everyone. Thank you.
All right. And I'm just going to end by saying I, I really wish a happy, very healthy new year to all of you. And all the people who are watching tonight. I really appreciate you tuning into this ceremony. You know, we, we don't get an opportunity all the time to see some of our residents. So it's nice when you can tune in and watch what we do. For my fellow commissioners, you can pick up your community committee assignments from Lisa. She has them and starting tomorrow, we'll make, start making schedules for all of those committee meetings. And we're off to a start with another new year. Let's hope that we all have a very, very good year. Father, thank you for your, your prayers and your words. We have a benediction by one of our favorite mayors who is also a pastor. So I'm going to turn it over to Hector Laura for the benediction.
Thank you, director. Allow me to congratulate Commissioners Lazar, Bartlett and Gallo. And obviously you, director, I'm being appointed as director as well as Commissioner Lazar again for deputy director and all of the commissioners for your hard work. If, if I may go right into the benediction. Blessed are you all, Lord, King of the universe, creator of heaven and earth. We present before you the conclusion of this meeting as well as the beginning of this new year. We thank you for all that we have gone through. But I have heard it said by commissioners, including most recently Commissioner Best, that it is easy to lead when things are going well. But most difficult to rise to the challenge when having to face adversities, especially those beyond any of our control. In the beginning of the pandemic, this board, they started off as freeholders. And today they are commissioners. It reminds me of the words of Deputy Director Lazar. So much is the same, but so much has changed. Though the title may have been changed, the commitment and the vision to serve others remains the same. I heard the words of Reverend Smith and I reflected upon them as he had the most beautiful and eloquent and inspiring prayer that we all inevitably seek the shalom of the county. Consider the need for peace in times of turmoil. Reminder that scriptures say blessed are the peacemakers, not those who would divide, those who would fight each other. Consider that we are in desperate need of your guidance and your spirit and your wisdom. That if we are to fight, we do not find ourselves fighting with one another, but rather fighting for those that we have been called to represent. I ask humbly on behalf of all those here that you would forgive us in every area of our lives where we have fallen short. Or we are to begin asking for your blessing, we should also acknowledge that we need your forgiveness, your grace and your mercy. I also believe and I would propose that it is important for those of us who are blessed with platforms and positions of influence to serve others, that we would be quick to humble ourselves and acknowledge that we are imperfect. Trying to do this job in a way that would honor you and serve those around us. As it has been shared, and I believe that the words came up in so many of the oaths that were taken, that if we are to express true faith, then that faith must come with works that can be seen by others. This has been a most difficult couple of years. Dealing with a pandemic, we face challenges that perhaps none of us would imagine. But this county, this board of commissioners, this administrator, these individual staff members led by chairman, the judge, visonage, assignment judge, Capicella. Obviously the clerks, all of the law enforcement, they rose to the challenge. When people were hungry, they were fed. When individuals were unsure of where they would get service, ranging from having to take tests, receiving much needed medicines such as vaccines and boosters, this county made sure that every municipality had access to those most vital resources. When individuals most desperately needed to know that the elected officials they had placed their faith in would be present to communicate and inform and educate, constant charts and data and stats and directions and cooperation with municipalities and leaders were available. When businesses were scared, did not know whether they would survive, county administrator and those and his staff along with commissioners ensured that they would facilitate outdoor eating and any other accommodation in order to secure the future of this county. Lord, I ask that you continue to guide us, all of us, but most especially this board. I ask that you would provide wisdom so that decisions are made in a way again that would honor you and serve others. I said you would guide each and every one of the representatives here to have hearts full of compassion as they make most pragmatic and difficult decisions moving forward to ensure the success of this county. What, what is it that you call each and every one of us to do, especially those that are privileged to hold office? Obviously, to make those very difficult and most pragmatic decisions to ensure that infrastructure is addressed, that open space is provided. But again, it is to serve honorably, to ensure that those most sacred words that are stated in the oaths that each have taken hold strong in the forefront of their minds and in their hearts. Lord, it was referenced today that we are celebrating a holiday for many who come from European descent as well as Latin American descent. It's Three Kings Day, but we are also reminded of incidents that occurred that had shaken the very foundation of this most sacred democracy. So I ask, Lord, that in the service that each of the commissioners continue to provide and the work that is done by all those in the county, that we may once again fill all of the residents with hope and great expectation. The government is here to serve and to help and to do what is correct. I ask all these things humbly in your great and most holy name. I thank you, God, because these past two years I have mentioned have been full of victories and wonderful accomplishments. But also of great loss of loved ones and friends and throughout it all, you have kept us steady and you have held us up. You never promised that the journey would be without trials or perfect. Today commit to us that you would go through it with us. So I thank you for this most wonderful and diverse county. I thank you for this board and for those who now hold positions in order to serve the community. We are never called to be uniform in our beliefs and our thoughts and our approaches, but we are called to be united in our desire to serve others. So I ask that you would get us there. And again, where we fall short, that you would make up the difference and remind us of this duty. I pray all this in your most holy and perfect name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Hector. Thank you. That was powerful. All right. Anybody else have anything to say? Otherwise I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Shout out to Matt Jordan and Mr. Semen. You guys are awesome.
You should invite them down, you know, but it's all right.
Is that, is that, is that a motion to close?
I don't know.
I moved the clothes. Thank you.
I don't know who that was, but thanks. Oh, thanks, John. All right. Roll.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy. Gallo.
Yes.
Lapore.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazar.
Yes.
Director James.
Yes. Happy new year.
Happy new year.
Happy new year.
Thank you, God.
Thank you, Commissioner Lazar for the invitation.
After party in Atlanta.